One, two, three, four.
Season two, episode one, Mike and John Got It Going On.
Do we though?
I'm, well, I have headphones on for the first time.
I know.
For the, this is the big debut of the next season.
Yeah.
I'm wearing headphones.
This is our new.
Yeah. We got a new toy here.
A new setup.
Yeah.
And we're still trying to work it all out. But yes, it's Mike and John Got It Going On brought to you by Firehouse Doors.
And we have to start season two off.
Yeah.
With a bang, of course, the premiere of what those that come to our big splash party are going to receive. The first 100 people through the door will get one of these.
Right.
I can't really see it now because I'm blocking us.
Well, no, but it's there. No, you're good. Now flip it around.
Flip it around.
There you go. And you got our sponsors on the back there. Cooper and Binkley Jewelers and Firehouse Doors.
And your tramp stamp of Mike and John Got It Going On right above your fanny.
Right in the perfect tramp stamp, the tramp stamp spot.
That way it won't get all shriveled up as we get older. So yeah, that's coming up this weekend.
Yeah, that's Saturday. You're talking about the tramp stamp shriveling up, right?
No, I'm talking about the splash party.
Right. Oh, right.
So the first 100 people at the Howell Theater, doors open at six, splash on the screen around seven.
Right.
And of course, we're doing giveaways with Cooper and Binkley Jewelers in downtown Brighton. Everybody's going to qualify for that. We'll give you a raffle ticket and we'll do the drawing after the movie.
Right.
So we have this, also a new toy here that, that John bought.
What we bought.
Well, I had no say in the matter. He went, you're just like, oh.
So we've got new stuff.
Yeah, new stuff. So this is a neat little unit that our microphones and thus the headphones have come into.
So we have new microphones, new recording unit.
I gotta redo my hair after the show.
Now, for the podcast only, now, you know, we've had exclusive post-show content for the YouTube and Facebook viewers.
Right.
Now we have exclusive add-ons for our podcast listeners only. So the people watching this on YouTube and Facebook aren't going to hear, for instance, the, this.
Oh, our fans.
The applause. We have a little button here.
Oh, so we have sound effects. Like we're R and D's in 1980.
Right. Or when we tell a wacky joke.
Oh, yeah.
The rimshot. Now, of course, the viewers on Facebook aren't here, but the podcast, they get that exclusive.
Let's not do that.
Audio content.
Why? Do we have a little hunky?
We could. We can add it. And if you want, we can add that.
No.
Yeah, no, we can do that.
I'm not a sound effects kind of guy.
We can do it.
I like natural sound.
Yeah, okay.
But if you must with the new thing we have here, the Pod Track P4.
Right.
That's what it's called. That's pretty fancy. You can tell we've, we've jumped into season two with, with new technology.
Yeah.
That's just fancy stuff.
Still trying to figure out, so. But we have a band now, for the podcast only.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, some bass going on there. Fire the band. I like Cooper better.
Thanks. Thanks, Paul. So.
Paul's in the band.
Yeah, well, yeah, you know.
Shaffer?
Paul Shaffer.
Paul Shaffer.
Or McCartney. Whatever. All right. So, yeah, we're not going to do that.
All right. Coming up, we'll get to the, the correct answer for last night's Wednesday night trivia. Studies found about 15% of married women say they regularly do this for their spouse. We wanted to know what it is. We'll go through some of your answers and give you the correct answer, which I don't think anybody got. We'll, we'll get to that in just a little bit. Rich Pearlberg and the Less You Know coming up. But before that, local news brought to you by Cooper and Binkley Jewelers in downtown Brighton.
All right, here's what's going on. Michigan State Police say a 10-year-old died Wednesday at a recreational area near Milford. Troopers assigned to Camp Dearborn, a 626-acre recreational retreat owned by the city of Dearborn, responded around 6:00 PM after witnesses reported a boy was on a floating play structure in the middle of the main lake and fell. The child, who was unresponsive, was taken to a nearby hospital with CPR in progress. But lifesaving efforts were ultimately unsuccessful, according to an MSP statement. While an autopsy is scheduled for Thursday, state police say it appears it was a tragic accident. A member of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners has asked Michigan State Police to investigate a claim that her challenger in the August Republican primary has violated state election laws. Second District Commissioner Carol Sue Reader claims former county commissioner David Domas illegally stated on campaign materials he was running for reelection. Domas previously served on the board from 2005 to 2018 when he withdrew from the primary. State police confirmed they were investigating a complaint by Reader but did not identify the target. Results, though, will be forwarded to the Livingston County Prosecutor's Office for possible charges. The leader of the base, a national white supremacist group that advocates for violence against the government, was sentenced Wednesday on charges of terrorizing a Dexter family in a case of mistaken identity. Justin Watkins of Bad Axe was sentenced to serve 56 months to six years in prison for his guilty plea to one felony count of gang membership. It was part of a plea deal with prosecutors in which his sentence could not exceed the one that he received in Tuscola County earlier this year for conspiring to train for a civil disorder. The cases resulted from a joint investigation by state police and the FBI. Charges were initially filed in October of 2020 against Watkins and Alfred Gorman in connection to a December 2019 incident, which authorities say a Dexter family was terrorized at their home after the men used intimidation tactics and posted messages to other members of the base targeting the home. Authorities say Watkins had mistaken the family's home for that of an anti-white supremacist podcaster. And a team of assessors from Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police will be in Howell later this month to examine all aspects of the Livingston County Sheriff's Office policies and procedures, management, operations, and support services. Sheriff Mike Murphy said the visit will take place Monday, July 25th. As part of the final onsite assessment, employees and members of the general public are invited to provide comments to the assessment team. They can do so by telephone or email. You'll find those details at MikeAndJohnPodcast.com. And that's what's going on.
And news brought to you by Cooper and Binkley Jewelers in downtown Brighton. Brighton's preeminent jewelry store with a commitment to customer service, community involvement, honesty, professionalism, and exquisite merchandise. And of course, Mark and Barb Binkley pride themselves on being a big part of the community and they are the proud sponsors of The Taste of Brighton, which is coming up next weekend. What are you doing?
I'm playing around with the microphone.
Now your microphone's off.
Yeah. Oh, there you go.
You know, I kind of like that. See, I used to be able to control this stuff when we were on the radio. I could turn your microphone off. Now I can do the here.
You know, maybe I'm going to move this guy over to my side. Trying to make this more equitable.
I see.
But, okay.
More controllable.
We're still trying to figure things out, so.
Cooper and Binkley Jewelers too, a part of our big giveaway coming up on Saturday night at the historic Howell Theater.
These microphones are pretty good.
You want the edge test?
Yeah, sorry.
You're such a kid sometimes.
We gotta figure this out.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. So where are we at now? Oh, yeah, we're at, we have to go back to our trivia question and then we're going to talk to Rich Pearlberg in, in just a little bit. Less You Know, what's today's topic?
Uh, we are talking about county commissioners race in District Five, as a matter of fact. Uh, the.
Three and four, screw you.
Indeed. Yeah, so a very, you know, hotly contested Republican primary for District Five. You've got former Howell Mayor Nick Proctor and the current Commissioner Jay Drick. And they are in quite the war of words, so we'll.
Maybe they should mud wrestle for the, the position.
Right. So. No, I don't, no.
Mud wrestling, so 80s. All right, our trivia question from last night. Studies found 15% of married women say they regularly do this for their spouse. Want to know what it is. What's the first thing that came to mind? A lot of people said make their doctor's appointments or dentist's appointments, those kind of things, medical kind of things. Making sure, because it's the last thing we want to do.
I don't know if they, my wife doesn't actually make the appointments, but she definitely stays on top. We're like, make sure, make the appointment. Have you made your appointment?
Yeah, yeah.
Going, okay.
Oh, boy, because I want to live longer. Some of the answers, give him a back rub, cut his hair, shave their back, wash their back in the shower.
Wash their back in the shower?
Lay their clothes out for them the next day. What are we, six?
Does it have your little name and the label on it, or?
We've got your underoos ready to go. Make their lunch every day, call off work for them.
Right.
Yeah, he's not going to make it today. Yeah, a couple of people have said the thing about the clothes. Trim their nose hair or their ear hairs. Yeah, Mona and Anne.
You think? You got any bears in the cave there, or?
I'm not looking up your nose. Pack their suitcase for a trip. You know, it's like, it's like we're a bunch of six-year-olds. Nobody can clip their toenails, lift the toilet seat, oh, it's time for you to go, honey. And pop their zits. None of these are correct, by the way. None of these are correct.
Thank God.
Uh, 15% of married women said on a regular basis, they will pick up the check at a restaurant for them.
Oh.
So my wife and I do that, but it's like.
But it's the same money.
Same spot, you know. You know, it's like, I left my wallet at home, you know, the same tricky pole.
But again, how many couples have separate finances, right?
Maybe more than we know. Maybe more than we know.
If we had, if, if we had separate finances, I would be broke all the time.
Somebody's got to control you. You'd buy new toys for the podcast, like the one with your little rimshots and sound effects and clap.
The audience loves it.
Yeah. It's kind of like, hey, John didn't pee on the toilet seat. Give him a round of applause. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
All right, we're done with that.
Okay. Eliminate those stupid buttons. It's so stupid.
Our OG sponsor, of course, we want to thank Firehouse Doors, who's also a part of our big movie night, our splash celebration for the summer.
That's right. One of the sponsors for that. They're family-owned. They strive to treat each customer like family. Veteran-owned, Mike Witt, a proud US Air Force veteran. They're your one-stop shop for residential, commercial, and rolling steel overhead door needs. And for the past 21 years, they've been Livingston County's only authorized distributor for CHI overhead doors. Call them today, 810-599-7480. Firehouse Doors. All right, it's time for the Less You Know.
Hey, wait a minute.
What?
Are we giving away TPC cards at the summer splash party?
Yeah, the first time that people enter the door, get a free t-shirt.
Shirt and.
And a TPC card, yeah.
And, and maybe even one of our little stickers, Mike and John Podcast stickers. These are limited edition, by the way. There you go. All right. The Less You Know is brought to you by our friends at Jordan Jenso. You know, what are we not going to ask Jordan about today?
Well, Mike, would you be interested in learning about the dramatic differences between seasons one and two of American Idol?
Other than Ryan Seacrest.
Because we're on season two right now. This is the first episode of season two for us.
About American Idol.
Well, a conversation with Jordan Jenso will leave you knowing less.
Of American Idol, seasons one and two.
This dialogue is so natural. Anyway, if you wanted to know about how the current housing market is changing in response to increased interest rates and inventory, a conversation with Jordan Jenso at RE/MAX Platinum will leave you knowing more, not less.
Exactly.
So give Jordan a call, 248-444-9777.
That's nine, seven, seven, seven.
Don't say 9777. That's not how you do it.
Nope.
It's nine, seven, seven, seven.
But before that, 444.
Well, yeah, don't just dial 9777.
You probably get some kind of strange line. You might, you're about American Idol one and two.
Yeah, 248-444-9777, or you can find him on Facebook at Jordan Jenso Community, serving community real.
Talk to somebody who really knows real estate and then, of course, Jordan Jenso and none of these others that claim to know more about real estate.
Right.
Rich Pearlberg in the Less You Know, what were we talking about? Oh, yeah, the contested race.
I don't know.
That's right. All right. Let's see, you got, you got everything set up, so we're, there it is. So you can hear the ring and it's not a sound effect. We're just podcast-only listeners.
I think we had the microphones up too loud, so they're picking up the interference.
You're in control of that. What if Rich isn't?
This is a learning process.
Hi, this is Rich. Can you leave a message?
Hi, Rich.
Hey, Rich.
For the less.
What do you, what do you want to say to her? Maybe Rich forgot.
Remember we were going to call?
Thing we do every week.
Hi, remember that email yesterday where we were discussing that we were going to call today? And, and now it's today and we're calling.
Your voicemail.
And.
Now we have to fill. We weren't prepared for that.
You know, I feel like we do know less. You know, I feel like maybe this should be the new segment.
We know less than.
We bring up a topic, we call Rich, we get his voicemail.
All right. And then we just leave him a message.
Just leave a message.
Well, hopefully, Rich, you get this message soon and give us a call back.
That'd be nice.
You know that. So the Less You Know, do you know somebody named Les in real life?
I do.
What Les do you know?
Uh, Les Rodwell is the former fire marshal for the city of Howell. And I believe he's a follower of the podcast.
So, and, and I know Lester Palmetier III.
Who's that?
He was one of my roommates. He lived in Eagle.
Oh, I know Lester Holt. He does the news.
Well, no, it's somebody that you know. You know him just from TV. It's not somebody that you know-no.
You know, we had a former correspondent named Les Rockwell.
Yes. He got into a lot of trouble down there, Les Rockwell.
But that was many, many years ago.
Well, you know what we'll do? Since we've heard Les from Rich.
Boy, sure. This is one of his best segments ever.
You know, I think this is the less he's, the least he's talked.
The least, the least we've, we've ever known.
You know, we're not starting off season two like we planned.
Season two sucks. We're in the sophomore slump. Season two ended on a bang. Season, I mean, season one ended on a bang and season two just sucks.
You know, perhaps.
We got crappy audio. No choice. What's going on? Nothing's working.
All right, here's what we'll do. We'll do the two cent history lesson and give Rich time to perhaps return our call.
Okay.
Today, of course, is July 7th. It's chocolate day.
Hmm.
Chocolate day.
I like chocolate.
Day is chocolate day for me.
Okay.
I need something chocolate. But if you look at, what is your go-to? If it's, you can only have one thing, chocolate, what's it going to be?
I don't know. I don't really.
Oh, you're not a chocoholic?
I mean, I'm not. I like chocolate. I don't, I don't know. I guess.
You, if I, if I said a Kit Kat right there.
Well, yeah, but, well, that's, but that's more than chocolate. It's got the wafer.
Well, sure. I mean, chocolate, anything with chocolate.
Anything with chocolate. Okay, I thought you kind of liked brand of chocolate is what you were referring to as opposed to that, yeah. Uh, Kit Kats, yeah. That's my, that is my kryptonite, yeah. And you?
Um, probably be some type of Milky Way if I'm going, you know, candy.
Hmm.
But then there's cake.
Now, Milky Way has the nougat or Milky Way has the.
Has the caramel. A little nougat too, but Three Musketeers is just nougat.
And what is nougat?
It's some kind of.
You know.
That is a question that many would like to know. We know what it is by seeing it, but it's like, what is it really?
What the hell is in nougat?
It's some kind of gummy chocolatey whipped stuff. What's the?
Dictionary definition is it is a family of confections made with sugar or honey, roasted nuts, whipped egg whites, and sometimes chopped candied fruit. And I don't think so.
And I don't think that's what's in a Milky Way or a Three Musketeers.
All right.
So I'm going, I'm going Milky Way.
You're going Milky Way. But isn't that, isn't that nougat, though?
I know there's some caramel in there that might be a little nougat. Uh, Father, Father Daughter Take a Walk Together Day today. National Macaroni Day, Build a Scarecrow Day, and National Strawberry Sunday Day. Sunday Day, that's kind of fun to say. Uh, 1802, the first comic book was published in Hudson, New York.
Hmm.
Was The Wasp. You never hear of The Wasp.
No.
I did not know that. Because you always hear of like the first Batman or Spider-Man.
Now, what year was this?
1802.
Oh, that's pretty okay. Oh, hey, look who called back.
You know what? Maybe we should tell Rich we're in the middle of the history lesson right now.
Bring him up here.
Hey, Rich.
Houston, what, how are you?
Well, we're in the middle of the two cent history lesson right now. We're officially a buttinsky.
We went to call you and we learned way less.
I saw that. I was here in Washington. I'm not sure I did it. I'll, I'll leave you guys to your business.
No, no, that's okay. We can finish the history lesson after we chat with you.
Well, but before we get to, we were discussing, what is nougat?
Yeah.
What is nougat?
Yeah, what's nougat? You know, like in a Milky Way?
Yeah, I know. And, and, you know, I'm going to have to go back over on our contract. I'm pretty sure there was something in there that said, no surprise question.
It's a very important question. What is in nougat?
With a contract?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I assume it was a contract.
Oh, okay.
Assuming.
It's a verb.
Yeah.
You know what? I actually read something about that and, and, and it slid right off my mind. I had no idea. But I, I, I do know there's a debate about, about it.
About nougat?
Yeah. I mean, we all, we all know, we've all heard the word nougat. We all apparently enjoy nougat. I don't know anyone who goes, oh, nougat. I don't like nougat. And nougat is one of those words, the more you say it, the weirder it sounds. Nougat, nougat, nougat.
I think you could, you could do something with that. Say, that guy's a real nougat.
How dare you, sir?
Don't get your nougats in a bunch.
That could become the new, you know, political attack.
Oh, yeah.
He's a real nougat.
Oh, that nougat.
Oh, you want. Yeah, oh, yeah.
He dropped a nougat on that one.
If you want real nougat, go with that guy. Yeah, he'll nougat that thing all the way up.
He's grooming nougats.
Well, so really, the only thing I know that it's really in or that I've, you know, most popular is, is The Three Musketeers. Now, I'm not sure if that's technically in a Milky Way.
It's, it is.
There's not as much nougat.
It says it's a chocolate.
I think The Three Musketeers had was air.
Well, that's the, the airiness of the nougat.
I always thought that was the biggest disappointment. You get this big old Three Musketeers candy bar and then you bite into it and there was nothing there.
Yeah, it's sometimes better refrigerated or something. All right. What is her? What were we talking with Rich about?
Nougat. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yes. We mentioned.
You know less than when you first.
Yeah. And that's, you've lived up to that promise. No, we were talking about the, the District Five race for county commissioner.
Proctor and Drick.
But, you know, Jay Drick is the incumbent and former Howell Mayor Nick Proctor uh, running for the Republican nomination under the August 2nd primary ballot. And these two have gotten into quite a battle of words or, or should I say, Nick Proctor and Debbie Drick? Jay's wife have gotten into quite a war of words, but anyway.
Well, I don't know. I know you think that. And Debbie's pretty good at that. She's, she's got a long political history. So I, I know back when, back when I was running the paper, it was whenever Jay would be on the ballot, all of a sudden we'd start getting letters to the editor from Debbie Drick. They were not political at all, but she was good at getting her name out there. You, you know, Drick, you know, even their slogan, Pick Drick.
Pick Drick?
I mean, that's, I mean, now you got Nick versus Drick.
Well, then you could go, hey, picnic, yeah, pick Drick.
Picnic, picnic or Drick.
Yeah, there you go.
I mean.
On a picnic.
I know it's this county commissioner race and I have got them having this battle. And now I see there's a second one out there.
Right.
Uh, Carol Sue Reader and, um, Dave Domas.
Right. We reported on that. She filed a campaign finance, or a campaign violation. Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, we just, I mean, how many people do you think vote in a county commissioner primary?
Well, as we've discussed before, in Livingston County, the GOP primary is generally the election.
That's the election, yeah.
Uh, so.
So what's your thoughts on the, on the Proctor and Drick deal?
Well, it's, it's interesting. I mean, to, to paint Nick Proctor as a fiscal liberal is, is a bit of a stretch. I mean, I don't want to make that well, but, but it'd be, he's, he strikes, he's the type of guy who believes in, uh, uh, government can do things, but it should be done, um.
Responsible.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, but, but it, it shows me, I think, the frustration of trying to run against what's become the, the mainstream Republican Party. You just, you just get a candidate gets up there and says, no taxes, government's bad, no taxes. I mean, that advertisement they put out there said that, that, uh, uh, one of, one of Nick's biggest drawbacks is that he's never run for county commissioner before.
Right.
So, so you can never elect anybody who's never run for office before.
No, they have to have been born into office.
Gee, Drick, I didn't work for office until the first time you ran for office. I mean, it doesn't make any sense. But, um, it's, it's tough. The county commissioners, you know, I've been thinking about it in advance of this call, which I know goes against the grain, but, um, how often do most people in the county come across in their daily lives anything to do with county government? They hardly don't. I mean, you don't, you don't go to the county commissioners in office. You don't go to the register of deeds or the county clerics. You hopefully aren't involved with the sheriff or the prosecutor's office. So, so it's, it's, uh, you only hear about the county commissioners when they end up doing something that becomes controversial. And even that doesn't affect most people's lives. So it's, it's, it's kind of a funny thing. I, 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 I'm terrible at predicting races, but, but Jay's been pretty good at local races. He's lost his judicial races, but he, uh, I'm not sure. I mean, how many, I don't even, I couldn't tell off the top of my head who's the mayor of Howell right now. Well, now I do know when I think about it. So how much, so does Nick have any type of name recognition to go against a guy like Jay Drick who has been able to gather votes in Howell? How, how, how many?
Well, I, I think they, I mean, I think they have, they both have name recognition. I think Nick has name recognition. I think, you know, I think what you're talking about, though, or at least my sense of it is, is that anytime, like, this is about ideological purity. And, you know, and it's not about issues. It's not about, you know, how are we going to move the county forward or how, what are these particular policies that are best for the county's growth and development and blah, blah, blah. It is about, do you align to this ideological chart? Uh, and, and where are you? And so when Nick, the former mayor of Howell, starts to talk about any kind of nuance, uh, that makes him vulnerable to this ideological purity test that, that I think Drick is throwing out there.
People want the same old, same old too. You know, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Well, I, I do like what Jenna's saying there because I, I looked at that exchange they had. And here on the one side, you've got the Drick campaign going, uh, don't vote for taxes, don't vote for taxes, don't vote for taxes. And on the other side, you've got Nick writing this two or three-page thing trying to explain the nuances of how state government runs. Where, where voters going to listen to?
I mean, unfortunately, you know, you hate.
Don't raise taxes.
I mean, right. It's easy to just throw that out there. I guess it, I'd like to think that more people might say, well, now wait a minute. Uh, and I'm dreaming now. Uh, but, but, but again, it's about ideological purity versus, I think, uh, you know, someone who's more, it really boils, I guess, when you ask people directly, you take away the names and you just say, all right, look, do you want somebody that's going to tell you what you want to hear? Or do you want someone that's going to tell you how things are? And when you ask it that way, most people, oh, I want to hear how, how things are. But then when you actually tell them how things are, which I think Nick is trying to do, that, that three-page explanation that he issued, trying to explain things like Proposition A and, and, you know, uh, property taxes and things like that, and how they affect revenue for municipalities like cities and townships and counties. Uh, you know, it just, again, it makes them very vulnerable to that ideological attack. Uh, and so that's where you see this, I don't know, it's sort of hypocrisy in, in what voters want. We say we want to be told the truth, but then when we're told the truth, we plug our ears and run away.
There's part of it too, where many people would say, what's a county commissioner?
That's a great, that's a great point.
I'm telling you. It's like, what, you know, what's the position? Oh, you know, you're in charge of the, the water running off the streets or, you know.
That's what I'm trying to say. The only thing we come into common, into contact with mostly is the roads. And the roads is the road commissioner, not the county commissioner.
Right.
So, so, you know, it, it is that, that issue. Because I think the county in general, and I don't have great insight on it, but from what I can tell, it runs pretty well. You get these, you get these controversies that make the headlines about not appointing Steve Williams to the Metro Parks or, or taking away the abortion plan of, of the county insurance things. And those get a lot of coverage. But that has very little to do with the day-to-day running of the county. And the county's a bizarre operation. You've got this huge budget and you've got department heads, some of which answer directly to the county commissioners. And, but the, the big names answer directly to the voters. They get elected. So, so this is a bizarre, uh, network of, of an organization chart. And yet it seems for all, to, to run pretty well. I, I don't know many great controversies in the, in the functioning of the government. Because most of it's pretty meat and potatoes stuff.
Well, that, that may have been true, but I think the pandemic did expose some of, when you have this ideologically driven body of government, because they control the health department. So in that particular instance, uh, I mean, you're, you're, you're seeing this ideologically driven, uh, effort to run county departments instead of, instead of deferring to expertise, it's do you now, so it's now it's not just fellow politicians have to line up on the ideological chart. It's, uh, it, it's, 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 you know, uh.
You're paid professionals.
It's administrators, experts, and paid professionals. You also now must line up on this ideological chart. It's administrators, experts, and paid professionals, you also now must line up on this ideological chart. So, I, I think there's, that's where I think we're beginning to see, I think Mike is dead right that most, there's many, many people out there who have no idea what the county board of commissioners does, is, or maybe even exists.
Yeah, they may, they may walk into the booth going, I, I like that guy's sign, okay, and they pay, they check the box. I mean, it's, uh, let's, let's face reality here.
Or they just recognize that, I mean, listen, as we know.
Name recognition or the sign looks good.
I mean, right, so, it's, uh.
Or who did that before? Okay, I guess things are okay, and they, they check the box, they just don't know.
I mean, it's like, if you're, if you're running for.
They don't even know, and that's kind of probably why, why, I mean, it is a name recognition, that's, that's kind of why I think Carol SuRieder is, uh, making us think about, uh, Domas putting his, uh, reelect Domas signs, because there's, there's gonna be a bunch of people saying, oh, yeah, I remember Domas used to be, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll reelect the incumbent. He's, he's not really the incumbent, 'cause he stepped down for, for a couple of terms, but, uh, it's, it's, you know, but John brings up a good point. They, I think for a while, the, the county department heads and administrators just kept their heads down, did their jobs, and, 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 and let the county commissioners have their little, little spitball fights. But, but now there's this, this very real risk that is gonna, uh, influence, uh, public policy that, that could have dramatic effects on, on the health and welfare of the community. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm, uh, real comfortable with the likes of Jay Drake and, uh, uh, Megan Reckling, who are, are obviously cultural warriors. You know, it'd be kind of interesting, I think I mentioned this once before, if Megan Reckling and, uh, Nick Proctor both got on the county board, considering their, their history on the drag queen bingo thing, but.
Well, you know, with Drake, uh, I, I mean, here's the thing, I mean, this is my personal opinion, and I just, from the people I know in this community, and I know people that are very conservative, uh, generally, they don't like Jay. I'm sorry, I mean, I hear many, many people who will say, off the record, uh, not into a microphone, but they'll say, I don't like Jay, I merely don't like him as a person, he's kind of a jerk. Um, and so, even though he may match up on these ideological grounds, uh, I don't know, I mean, I wonder, it sounds to me like you're saying, as the incumbent, based on the current political environment that we've got, you're thinking Jay kind of has this, that Nick is so.
I think, I mean, he's lost when he's going countywide, he's, he's been beaten pretty heavily by, by, both ends, I think by Teresa Brennan, but, but, uh, locally, he's won those races, and, and those Pick Drake signs, I think they're silly, but they, they remind people, oh, yeah, I voted for Jay before, I mean, when he, when they had that open position when Donnie Parker, uh, stepped down, uh, he went pretty handily, didn't he? I mean, uh.
Jay, yeah, I don't remember the exact, uh, thing, but yeah, he did, he did get in there. I mean, as you pointed out, he lost judicial races that he ran for, but then he was appointed to the magistrate's position, but then resigned, but then resigned it away, and he said for help reasons.
Gee, it's unusual, I mean, if you recall back when he first ran for, uh, for district court, or for circuit court judge against Teresa, his push was, you shouldn't let, um, a Democrat appoint a, uh, a judge for Livingston County, just, 'cause, uh, Brennan had been, uh, appointed by Jennifer Grantham. And his whole point was, I said, we shouldn't have a Democrat, you shouldn't let a Democratic, uh, a candidate who's been appointed by a Democrat. Well, then, our reporter Dan Meisler just didn't even found out that Jay contributed to Jennifer Grantham's campaign. So, so I, I mean, he's, he's, he's a political animal, and it didn't matter, I mean, I think, I think you gotta be pretty, pretty handly. But, but, uh, a local race, a primary race, I don't know, depends, it depends if, if, I mean, I know, uh, the Drake team, uh, Jay and Debbie will be out there with signs and phone calls, and there are actually a lot of advertisements, uh, will Nick get out there and, and knock on doors?
Well, I mean, it's, I, uh, look, District Five includes the city of Howell, uh, which is opposed to the surrounding, I mean, look, Livingston County in general, very conservative, no, no, no doubting that. Uh, but, the city of Howell, if anything, is less conservative than, say, some of the surrounding townships.
That, that's true.
So, I think, I think if there's a chance it's in District Five, and I, I just hope, you know, I wonder if, if people might say, look, if we're gonna have a commission that's gonna have, be led by Wes Nogegary, and is probably gonna have Megan Reckling on it, uh, and, 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 you know, and, and Brent Plank and others, uh, and maybe Dave Domas, very hard-right ideological people, maybe it would be beneficial to have somebody to counterbalance that, I mean, uh, you know, I know. They're not gonna get that.
This is a Republican primary.
I know.
Time wants it to be balanced, it's probably not gonna be balanced.
Who's gonna be voting it? It's gonna be the people who vote Republican primaries, and they're very avid voters, you gotta give them credit for that.
No, you know, there's no doubt, I mean, Carol Griffith is not gonna seek another term on the board, and she's sort of, yeah, she's been that centrist, she's been that person that, you know, and, and her and Kate Lawrence before were, sort of held that central block, uh.
Maggie Jones did it too, yeah, you had a little bit of common sense.
And now with Carol leaving, uh, you know, I, it, it, the board is gonna, is primed to take a hard-right turn, which, which was already pretty hard-right to begin with, so.
Yeah.
Um, so, I guess, this segment has lived up to its name, 'cause I think we know less about what's gonna happen.
Well, I just, I just gotta say, it's such, it's taking such a turn, when I first came to this county, God help me, that was almost half a century ago, uh, the county board of commissioners didn't, didn't play those types of games, they, they're basically trying to run the county as frugally as possible. You had guys like Jack LaBelle, Fred Dillingham was on the board, uh, there were, there were nine commissioners and two of them, and I swear to God, this is true, were Democrats, John Rushford and Ned Davis. And it wasn't that big a deal, they just, they dealt with issues, they got the ambulance department started, and it's, it's, it's kind of too bad, it's become so ideological. But I do think Nick's running and candidates like Nick run into an uphill battle, because they've gotta defend government, and the other side just says, government's bad, taxes, cut them.
Right.
Don't.
And that, in a primary that plays.
Wait a minute, government's bad, but I wanna be in government.
Well, you know.
It's a different story.
But, 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 but they, they're, they're in there to control us, to stop government, you know, it started with Ronald Reagan when he said, uh, uh, government's not the solution, it's the problem. And, and in fact, that's not true, in many cases, government's gotta be the solution. We believe in police departments and, uh, in roads and, and going to a restaurant or a grocery store not having found meat being sold to us, and that's all because of well-functioning governments, you know?
Well, right.
But, uh, but that.
And, and yet.
There's nothing wrong with trying to make your government run well, but it shouldn't be considered the enemy.
Right, and, and the two examples you just bring up, law enforcement, sheriff's department, the budget is run through the county commission, health department, again, through the county commission. So, the county commission, despite what many people may or may not know, does have an impact on your day-to-day, you know, life here in Livingston County, so, whether.
Yeah, to some, to some extent, and it depends how it's run, and it depends how, how much finesse the administrators can do, I mean, we've had county administrators, uh, it was Belinda Peters, I think, who's just outstanding, and they, they stay out of the political limelight, and they try to run things, and, uh, uh, let the county commissioners get all, all the publicity, which is not a bad way of working things. I mean, it was a time when you didn't have the county board of commissioners, it was the board of supervisors, and the supervisor of each town show was, did double duty and was on, on the board. But, that got changed because it was unequal representation, so now you've got this extra layer of government, and you've got all these fiscal responsible Republicans, who are the highest-paid elected, uh, governing board in the county.
Oh, that's why they're going for the gig, they have the money.
But, you know, I, 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 I think the potential is there for, for a lot of mischief to happen. You know, what you hope for is that they, they, they strut and do some posturing and, and let the professionals do their job, but, uh, uh, John brings up a really good point, uh, there are meddling ones in the health department issue there, and, and, uh, I, I'm not sure how much, how many health degrees the, uh, the county commissioners have, but I, I would probably prefer the, uh, the experts.
Take zeros on those. Right, well, you know, is it, so to wrap this up, I guess, uh, and, and back to the race itself, it, it, you know, it's obviously, it's Nick Proctor's race to win. He's gonna have to go out and win it, it's an uphill battle, I think that that is probably true. Uh, you know, just, uh, Jay being the incumbent, that gives him a certain advantage, but for all these other reasons, uh, so. We'll see.
There's something that Nick's gotta be thinking about, what if he wins?
Holy hell, what have I done?
I had a, I had a friend tell me that when I ran for the state house, she was living in Florida, she sent me an email, she says, you realize if you win, you're gonna act as her.
Oh, what? Just send the checks here, I, alright, well, indeed, we know less, and we thank you, Rich Perroberg.
Alright, Rich, thanks for doing this.
Yeah, alright.
You too, have some nougat.
Yeah, hey. Alright, The Less You Know brought to you by Jordan Jenzo Remax Platinum, if you, uh, Nike, if you want to know more, give Jordan a call, two four eight four 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 nine seven seven seven. Or find him on Facebook, Jordan Jenzo Community Survey Community Realtor.
Alright, where were we on the history last time we get back? It was, uh, we, the first comic book.
Okay, eighteen oh two.
Eighteen oh two.
It was The Wasp?
The Wasp.
Yeah, what was The Wasp about?
Uh, a bug. About three pages long.
Was it like a superhero thing, or? It just seems a little early for.
The Wasp.
You know, I just, uh.
Uh, nineteen thirty, construction began on what is now the Hoover Dam, originally the Boulder Dam. Either way, you're swearing while you say the name of it. The first package of sweeten low sugar substitute was served at a restaurant in nineteen fifty-seven. I like Splenda better, but.
Yeah.
I always had that aftertaste.
My wife will do, uh, pretty much acrobatics to get the Splenda, that's the yellow, right?
Yellow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, if they bring, she's like, nope, bro, blue, nope, pink, nope.
Yeah, 'cause, what's the other one, the, uh, the blue one is what?
Equal.
Equal.
Blue is equal, the Spl- yeah.
Sweet low is not sweet, it's, it's like chemical.
Equal, and now she is, uh.
I like Splenda, it sounds nice.
And now she has, you know, a little baggie in her purse, and you're like, okay.
Oh, so she had a little white box at the restaurant, there's, you know.
She doesn't steal, no, 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 my wife's very, she doesn't steal any, but she makes, she's very particular, must have Splenda.
Yeah, I, I prefer Splenda, too, so.
We're in the Splenda. I mean, she will, she'll send waitresses, oh, hey, I think I see Splenda over there, go, tit, 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 go get it.
Does a ninja move over to table six. Nineteen eighty, the Solar Challenger became the first solar-powered aircraft to cross the English Channel, Solar Challenger. Bruce Springsteen in nineteen eighty-four went to number one in the US on the album charts with Born in the USA, spent a total of one hundred thirty-nine weeks on the US charts. Had quite a few hits off that album.
Uh, yeah. I, I still find it interesting how many people think that Born in the USA is a patriotic, you know, red, white, and blue, rah, rah, rah song. I think it's, it is patriotic, but not in the way people think it is, it's like, did you read the lyrics?
Well, it, it is misleading, too, when you look at the cover of the album, you got the flag, and you've got Bruce in his blue jeans and white t-shirt.
Well, it kind of goes back to what we were just talking about, it's like, uh, you want someone to say that, what you wanna hear, or do you want them to tell you how it is? Bruce, I think, is somebody that kind of tells you how it is.
And two thousand ten on this day, Paul McCartney joined Ringo Starr onstage, by the way, today's Ringo's birthday, at a concert in New York City, at, uh, the Radio City Music Hall to celebrate the former Beatles seventieth birthday, so Ringo's eighty-two today. Uh, with Ringo's all-star band, John, uh, Yoko Ono, Joe Walsh, Angus Young, Stevie Van Zandt, all belted out birthday for Ringo, and then he sang with a little help from my friends. That, that was, I can't believe that was twelve years ago.
Eighty-two.
Yeah, Ringo's eighty-two and is still.
Paul just celebrated eighty.
Introduce an Australian for today.
They look better than me.
Well, you haven't gone on tour yet, when you go on tour, you'll start to look better.
Hmm. So there's that.
There is that.
Alright.
Uh, also, I was, there was, uh, I thought this was interesting, let me pull this up here. Um, when it comes to buying cars, when it comes to buying cars, more men, it's, the color of the vehicle is more important to men than it is to women. I don't think that that's too out there.
Right.
'Cause there are some cars, I'm like, you paid for that color? And there's others where you're like, oh, yeah, that looks really great. Sixty percent of men say color is the deciding factor on whether or not they're gonna buy a vehicle. So if you're going into the dealer, and let's just say there's, like, Battleship Gray in the vehicle you want, and Battleship Gray is the color you never would buy, guys would decide to buy a different vehicle. Thirty percent of women say color is the deciding factor when it comes to purchasing, purchasing a vehicle.
There, I.
I think it's.
It depends on the color.
That's what I'm saying.
I know, that's what I'm saying, and, I, but I mean, but even with it, like, certain colors, like, I don't care, if it's black, brown, or white, eh, if it's, you know, like, some really neon green.
Well, yeah, the, the neon green brings a great point, 'cause there's a lot of, uh, the sports or muscle-type cars, like the Charger, Challenger, those kind of things, even, even Mustangs and Camaros that are in that really bright highlighter-type green, hold on, like this, and it's like, for me, even though it might be the car I want, I'm not buying this color.
Right.
But for my kids, they're like, oh, that's so cool.
Exactly.
We're old, so.
Take the brown Oldsmobile, sir, thank you.
If it says, if it had Olds in the title, that means you're old.
Well, that's why they got rid of Oldsmobile.
It's kind of.
Yeah, apparently, old, only old people are buying these cars.
Buick took over for that now. Oh, it's a Buick, must be an old guy car. Oh, and it's in tan? Or kind of an off-gold?
Right.
Yeah, alright, sorry if I offended all you oldsters.
Dare you, sir. Alright, alright, so, uh, wrapping up episode one of season two.
Well, it wasn't as exciting as we planned, was it?
It was okay, I mean, we're, look, we're getting ready, we are conserving ourselves.
Oh, we're saving it up.
For Saturday.
That's right.
Alright.
Don't expect much tomorrow, then.
Our summer splash party.
That's what's going on.
Yeah.
John will be in a thong, the first one hundred people through the door get a, uh, Mike and John Summer Splash t-shirt.
And a look at me in the thong? No one will come.
No. Boxers, maybe? Alright, so we're gonna give away the t-shirts?
Yeah, TPC cards.
And a chance to win some jewelry from Cooper and Binkley Jewelers, other swag, and you get to see the movie splash free.
Yeah, right, and some GiggO giveaway, oh, and, and, and.
A three and?
Yeah.
That's a three-ander.
Tyler DePero, the owner of the Hall Theater, has graciously, uh, said he's gonna donate twenty percent of all concession sales are gonna go to Tour 280.
So you buy the popcorn, twenty percent of what you buy.
They got great popcorn there, use that coconut oil, people love that popcorn, so, you're, and you can't see a movie without popcorn, I mean, what's the, you, you.
That's part of the experience.
It's not allowed. So you're gonna wanna get some popcorn, and you can know that twenty percent of those proceeds. Yeah, oh, for sure.
I don't really like snowcaps, but I thought I'd ask.
You know, I don't, they're okay.
It's like having a chuckle.
No chuckles, I never understood chuckles.
Especially the big black chuckle.
Here's a chuckle.
Alright, you have one red one, and I'm done, 'cause the green and, and the clear one, and.
Chuckles are, if you, okay, you know how you have a jelly jar, and when you, the, the jelly that congeals around the lid?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, if you scrape all that off and molded it into, that's a chuckle. So, I just, I, no, I'm not eating a chuckle.
They named it chuckle, 'cause.
I'll have a goo, I'll have a goober, I'll have a raisinet.
You are a goober.
I, well, that too, I'll have a snow cap, no chuckles, no, sorry.
Make a licorice whip.
I'm licorice, I don't understand licorice.
Twizzler, red rope, those long ones.
Hmm.
I like those.
Well, this has been quite a fascinating conversation.
Should've saved it for the post-show.
Damn it.
Let's wrap this up.
No, we've got post-show.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Okay, we got post-show?
Yeah.
We'll get to the post-show for you YouTubers. Is Cooper here?
Not here, but she will be there Saturday at the summer splash party.
She's gonna perform some tunes?
Yeah.
Sing-alongs?
Think she'll do a sing-along to, um, you know, our themes, our theme song, yeah, I think so.
Do you know the words? It's coming to me.
I'll see, very blue. Giggle on.
Giggle on.
Alright.
Post-show.
Okay, we're post-show now.
You must deliver.
Well.
You said there was post-show.
One of our, uh, one of our fans, who is a regular.
One of the two.
That's not very nice. Why would you say that?
Was it about your CD collection?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I did see that.
They, they, you know.
They turned to the post-show for the CD collection.
Right.
Every now and then, I wander back and pick out a CD, and John tells a story.
Right.
Where that.
Which just shows you that some people have pretty low standards for what they consider to be entertainment, so I figure we would, uh, we would indulge. Which just shows you that some people have pretty low standards for what they consider to be entertainment, so I figure we would uh, we would indulge.
Well, do you wanna go back and pick out?
No, you're gonna, no, the whole, the whole shtick.
It's me picking out.
It's you picking it out.
Alright, you give me a row, and I'll pick a CD from there.
Alright, row three.
Row three.
Alright.
Seat sixteen, alright, row three.
It was our, it was our, it was our friend Jeff DeHanes.
Yeah.
Right, Jeff said, I always wa- I always watch the exclusive content, ready for more from John's CD collection in the back.
Alright, I'm just randomly swiping.
Row three, here we go.
Row three.
This is the kind of entertainment, you don't get this anywhere else, fellas.
So, row three is like the uh, the last third of the alphabet.
Right, I have my alphabetized, I don't take those on a post-show now.
And it's uh, Sing It Again Rod, I used to have this on cassette, Sing It Again Rod, which I think most of these were released on other albums.
It's like your greatest hits.
Yeah, so Sing It Again Rod, tell us the story, did you buy it because Pinball Wizard was on it?
I bought this CD, there is a story to this CD, I bought this CD, a station that we used to work for many, 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 many years ago,
Yeah.
uh, down in Monroe, I, even before you started, cause I worked there originally, and then you, you came later, but uh.
To, to, Tower, ninety-eight.
Yes, Tower Ninety-Eight in Monroe, um, and uh, I was doing the news there, but then they needed a weekend, Jack, and I became uh.
He's multi-talented.
Yeah, and, and, and so I became.
JJ Quinn.
No, no, I was JJ Quinn already.
Okay, you're already JJ Quinn.
No, well, I was John King doing the news, then I became JJ Quinn.
Multiple layers of personality.
Trust me.
Let's get to the CD, why?
Yeah, well, I'm done, so then they said, oh, you know what, we wanna do kind of a, a cool type, uh, cause it was a Top Forty station, so they played, you know, that kind of stuff. And they said, you know, we wanna do some, we wanna do like a cool specialty show on the weekends where we're doing like oldies type music, fifties, sixties, and seventies. And they said, so, okay, but you can't be John JJ Quinn, so I made up Johnny Be Good.
There's three of them.
So, I was at one time, I was John King, JJ Quinn, and Johnny Be Good.
That's original.
And then, I saw this CD, and it was on like a discount bin, and I was like, oh man, I gotta get this, this guy, you know, probably.
With a Best Buy sticker on it.
Absolutely, and I'm like, oh, this has, you know, it's got, you wear it well, reason to believe, uh, and then, you know, like, like I said, it's got Maggie May, of course, um, but then Pinball Wizard, and, and so, so I was like, I gotta have the CD, and I bought it, so I can play it.
That's, that's the story.
Story sounded a lot better when I started, it didn't really end well, kinda like this podcast.
Now we all know.
What if you wanted to?
Rod looks really young on this one too.
Jeff, Jeff is gonna chime in and go, on second thought, you know, I.
You know, the interesting part is when you look at how Rod Stewart used to dress in the sixties and seventies, mostly the seventies, you know, it was pretty.
Well, that's why, when I hear the, when I hear people are like, these, these kids these days, and they're gender bending, I'm like, hello, David Bowie, David Bowie's calling.
Yeah, Steven Tyler dresses kind of like that too, but, but I like Aerosmith.
Not that new, not that new, alright.
Alright, that's our, our wrap.
Thank God.
Want me to hit the button?
Yeah, I'm too exhausted.